Call the meeting order, six oh two. Judy, take your role. Number two, approval of consent agenda, A through E. Anybody have any questions or for us if you want to go through some things? Go through purchase orders, general funds, it's in your packet. This is the sheet, the general fund start with. There are several this month on there. A lot of one-time expenses, especially down towards the bottom of that. Just to kind of get the year started, some of our subscriptions that we use throughout the year. So you'll see that the amount is quite a bit more than what we're used to. Like I said though, just getting the year started, there are several of those things on there. We did split our insurance costs into three separate payments. So we should have one more of those that we make. So that's still included in there. Alpha plus, that's a program that we've used for quite a while and continue to use that in the elementary. Edgenuity, edgenuity is what we use in our alternative education program. And for any credit recovery students or needs that they may have, we use that. So that is a one-time payment to them for the year. Stephen L. Smith, financial consultant fees, a little over eight thousand. Some textbooks, math books there, archway marketing services, that's what that is. Canocal communications, our new security cameras, ten thousand five hundred. We did go through this entire building over here and we have to pay for three cameras. So now we, we pretty much have complete coverage of this building, outdoor and the gymnasium, even out back in the alley. Last year, we had a bicycle stolen in the middle of the day, right down here on the north end of the building. And it was just in an area that we couldn't really see. So we addressed those blind spots and had Canocal come in and do that this summer. And our plan is to utilize federal dollars to help pay for that. And we can do that with those dollars. So we should be able to get that back and that, that's a long-term investment. So those cameras are quite a bit better than the ones that we did have here. And so just another way that we can upgrade some security features that we have. Microsoft licenses, again, a one-time expense. Digi security systems for a little over a thousand down there, number one oh seven. That's for the kiosks, the two that we use to sign in and out at both buildings. Those licenses for that. So like I said, a lot of one-time expenses up there at the top, just on our regular monthly expenses. Our electric bill is quite a bit more, of course, as hot as it's been. We expected that to be higher, but utility costs have gone up overall. Not just for us, but for everybody. And so that's, we've got, we'll keep an eye on that as we go through the year. Hopefully temperatures are going to start to go on at some point and we'll get a little relief that way. But like I said, other than those, most of the bigger ones, one-time costs at the beginning of the year to get things going. So it's a little bit higher now. Last year, we had kind of spread some of those things out as much as we could. We didn't have to carry over to work with, and so we do now. And so we're able to go ahead and pay for some of those things upfront now and get those taken care of. That covers most of the general fund, or all of the general fund purchases listed here. Building fund, biggest expense we had in building fund is we had to replace a compressor on the air conditioner over at the building house. That went out just right at the beginning. And it was down for, we can have for two weeks. And so we had to have AC services. We had to get that ordered and get it replaced and it's up and running now. So that was a big expense that we did have forty-six hundred dollars out of the building funds for this last month. Child nutrition, we have had a few things we've had to address as far as repairs, our freezer. It's kind of been giving us some bits. And so we've had to make some repairs down there in the kitchen. So we do have a few extra expenses there other than just our regular monthly expenses. The Keystone Lucky Bills, they're the ones that came and did the work on the freezer. And that was for a little over thirty-seven hundred dollars. We had to replace a piece of place the glass on the salad bar at the elementary. And that was, that was expensive, three hundred and twenty dollars. And then we had to do just some yearly suppression testing to ABS fire, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars. So a couple of things there that had to come out of child nutrition that aren't normal. Other than that, it's kind of business as usual. And then our bond fund, there was money there that was transferred to make the deadline. That was, yeah, just to make the deadline, it was wire transfer that we had to make, make a payment on that, five hundred and one thousand. Any questions through A through E? Activity report, Kendra's not here. Which is kind of in business as usual there. Lots of activities going on, so lots of different things going on out there, officials and gatekeepers, fundraising, just a lot of normal activities there. Treasurer's report, we do have that for you. Have to be the space here, it's in there somewhere.
It's on the box.
On the box, okay. And that kind of gives you a look, now that's at the end of August. Hasn't changed a lot, but those will give you kind of an idea of our ending monthly balances there. As you can see, our general fund has nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars. Building fund sits at a hundred and fifty-four thousand, ninety-nine. Our child nutrition fund has a hundred and twenty-five thousand, three twenty-two. Brooke Bond Fund, after that payment, still has sixty-four thousand, three oh three in it. And then the SEC Fund sits at thirty thousand, two forty-five. So, you know, those, those numbers are good. I wouldn't say that they're great, but we still have some goals that we're trying to get to, but we're getting much closer. We do have some room to breathe and we've been able to address some needs that we have and be able to do that with some confidence. So that's good. So things there are still going in the right direction. We do have a couple fundraising requests on E. Baseball, we'd like to sell hats, cheer隊g hats. And then our girls and boys basketball teams would like to sell the discount cards that they do each year. And I have those, those requests with me. So those are the two requests there. So that, that would be everything in A through E. And if there's any questions on those, I will do my best to answer. Questions, concerns? I'd like to separate A, just as I wasn't here on the, on the August eighth minute. So one of you guys that were here, if you could make a motion just to approve A, and then we'll do B through E together.
Make a motion to approve A.
Make a motion to approve A, you have a second? Another second, Judy?
Littlefield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
I'm saying, I'm sorry, I am saying.
Oh, right. Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Thank you. B through E, I'll make a motion to approve B through E, do you have a second? Gibson's second, Judy?
Littlefield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Number three, principals report.
So I look back to last year, at this time, right now, as of today, we have a hundred and ten students enrolled in high school nine through twelve. We have ninety-one enrolled in junior high, that's two up from last year, and the exact same date last year in high school and down low in middle school, on the exact same day. So we're pretty steady. Our number of good to lower will get those, so that's good, good to see. One thing I'd like to remind, more in football, softball, I mean, we're getting activities, is that sportsmanship is everybody's responsibility. So keep that in mind when we go to activities. I know the SS is big on that right now, so I'd just like to point that out. Softball had their last home game tonight, senior night, they have a doubleheader, they won their first one four-three, you know that. They start district softball next week at Sealing. I'm not sure on the times yet or the dates exactly, they just have them to be. This Thursday, sophomores, this is the sophomore class, we're going to Tulsa, the entire class on Thursday to tour the Sherwin Miller Museum of Jewish Art Holocaust Museum. One of our new state mandates is that we expose all of our, at least once, to the Holocaust. So what a better way than taking the entire class to visit that museum. So they're going Thursday with Ms. Baldwin, Mr. Paris. And I believe Ms. Baldwin told me Cherokee Education Foundation is going to help with the costs and the meal that day. So that's a great, great on them. Ruston James will receive the American FFA degree this year at the National FFA Convention, so former student that graduated. Right now, the Oklahoma State Fair starts this week. Currently, they're working on State Fair indoor exhibits, there's fifty-seven, I believe, she told me she's taking down tomorrow. Students are competing in skillful phones, livestock judging, dairy judging, as well as exhibiting livestock at the Oklahoma State Fair. Alfalfa County Fair was last week. I've got a whole list of results, I don't have all of them, I know, I think there was some rabbits I missed. And probably some of the horse show stuff I don't have, but I have a lot. For FFA, Waylon Utterback was a champion commercial review, first place cross heifer for weather. Gavin Guffey was fifth place doe kid, and fourth place doe kid, Aiden Hall was first and third with place with chickens. And the school group was first place in the goats. As far as the 4H, Stetson Metcalf was reserve champion Sematol Heifer. Brett Phales was reserve grand weather lamb, reserve champion commercial review, champion hamp weather, junior lamb showmanship. Levi Solis was reserve champion spec weather, Everett Utterback was champion spec weather. Tegan Rose was reserve champion hamp weather. Dragon Rose was reserve champion shrop weather. Tanis Allison was third place doe, second place doe, third place doe. Trace Allison was fourth place doe. Price Poe was first place hamp weather, grand weather goat, intermediate goat showmanship. Perry Poe was first place weather goat, third place weather goat, junior goat showmanship. Aubrey Hughes was reserve grand weather goat, second place weather goat times two. Aubrey Cudmore was champion division two weather goat. And then livestock judging for the FFA and 4H. First place junior FFA team was Gavin Guffey, Dominic Link, Katie Reese, and Juan Castro. High individual junior FFA was Gavin Guffey. High reason junior FFA was Dominic Link. Second place junior 4H team was Kendall Collins, Aubrey Hughes, Tegan Rose, Bryce Poe. Third place junior 4H team was Brett Phales, Perry Poe, Autumn McManahan, and Tanis Allison. Fourth place junior 4H team was Trace Allison, Hayden Hansel, Case Bizard, and high individual junior 4H was Aubrey Hughes. I know last week, Ms. Jordan is here, I'll give her some credit. Our clothes closet is in that closet right over there, and it really wasn't a closet, it was just kind of jam-packed, you couldn't even walk into it. And her and Kendra took everything out and had a lot of student volunteers to move everything out, organize, go through, clean. And now, when you open that door, it's like, oh wow, this actually looks like a closet, and you can find stuff, so big thanks to them. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Gutch and some of our SP UCLA students to talk about their trip to National Convention and FCCLA.
So I'm not going to talk long because this is their show, and that's something that is big to me. I'm going to, I'm going to lead them along, maybe not, maybe I'll follow them along. But I always want them to get the credit for what they've done. So I told them they each have twenty minutes. I'm just kidding, they were nervous if you guys, when I said that. So just a couple of things I want to point out. I always like to say this isn't your mother's home ec. We're not home ec anymore, we're a family consumer sciences, and that's what I teach. And then FCCLA is the bonus that goes along with it. And it is intracurricular, which means that the projects and things we do for FCCLA are part of my curriculum in my classroom. So these students obviously are cream of the crop, they've been competing and they've been to lots of things. But every student in my classroom is involved in what we do with FCCLA. If they want to compete and travel and do those things, then they do have to pay their dues to become part of that. But as far as service projects, fundraisers, things like that, it's a big, a big family project. So I do have a little packet for you, I won't go through all of that. But just some highlights over the last eight years, this is, I'm starting my ninth year. So all of these numbers are great. Fifteen state champions, ten state runners-up, six third-place state winners, a national champion, four national runners-up. Six-time Gold Star Chapter of Excellence, thirty-nine students who have attended a national leadership conference. We've had eleven district officers, three district presidents, and one state officer. And then virtual business challenge, two national champions, five national runners-up, and three third-place finishes at national level. Those are great. But those numbers aren't why they do what they do. Maybe for some of them, they're competitive, I'm a little competitive myself. But the important thing is what do they get in the process? So it's great to go and get plaques and medals and trophies. But what they don't realize is that from point A to point B, that's where the important stuff happens. So finally, the VIX number on there is nine thousand. And that is the number of community service hours that we have provided in the last eight years. So that's probably my favorite number out of all. What I'm going to do is introduce each of them, and then they're just going to talk for a split second. I'll start with Lake, and you guys do have an individual page here. He obviously isn't here, he's on to his post-secondary experiences. But he did serve as a national evaluator for star events. So he was on the flip side in San Diego this summer and was actually judging the competition. He was the high individual state champion in meat identification, and then his team was the state runner-up. And then in 2019, his virtual business challenge team was national runner-up. I'll go ahead and talk about Davin, he is on his way. He went to give blood and had a little fun experience. So he's running a little bit behind, they kept him a little longer than he had planned on. Davin came to us about a month ago from Winoka. We are super thrilled to have him. You don't get a lot of Davin booties that come into your program. So he was already a district officer, and so now he falls under my umbrella. As a district officer, he is the vice president of membership. And then he also is our vice president of competitive events. His numbers I did not include on ours because that was his deal before he came. But as an eighth grader, he got third place at Nationals and was state runner-up. And then in San Diego, as a freshman, he was national runner-up, and he had a national gold medal, and he was the state champion last year. Okay, first up is Abby. Abby has kind of a unique star event experience. As an eighth grader, she did not get to go compete at regionals because of weather. And then as a freshman and sophomore, COVID affected her competing. So last year, she was state qualifier in star events and national runner-up in virtual business challenge.
I guess, like she said, I've been in Ms. Gutch's class since I was in seventh grade, so her and I have pretty good relationship. And I've been pretty active in FCCLA, I'd like to say. Like she said, Riley and I, Riley Hensley and I did the virtual business challenge, which is basically you do a simulator and you kind of make sure your little guy doesn't die, you got to pay your taxes. Learned a lot about doing taxes, visiting Ms. Gutch's room until about midnight, doing my taxes during state convention. But it all worked out, so like I said, we got second, and I got to go up on stage at Nationals in San Diego, get the plaque, and so that was cool. Also at San Diego, I got to be a part of the Oklahoma, what's it called, like voting delegate? Team, so me and like eight other people just from around the state, we were together a lot. I was with them pretty much all day, one day and a few hours, the other a few days. And we sat in on the networking and all of the speeches for all of the national office candidates. And then after that, we sat down with the lady that was in charge of us, a teacher from Edmund, and we judged all of them. And basically, we cast the ballot for Oklahoma FCCLA, who Oklahoma would vote for in the national officers. So that was really a cool experience, and I remember, and I'm pretty good friends with some of the people I was with, and it's interesting to see them on some of the things. And that's all of it.
Okay, next is Carson Schombacher. In 2021, she was state qualifier in star events. Last year, she was state champion in her star event. And nationally, she got a silver medal and was eighteenth overall. I probably should have prefaced this before they started, but thousands of kids start out competing. Our events move from district to region to state, just like I compare it to athletic competitions. So you have to win to keep going on. So out of thousands of people who start, even making it to San Diego is a huge deal. And then finishing top twenty, top ten, top five, that's just icing on the cake. So, and then also in 2021, Carson's virtual business team was national champions.
So I got to compete in career investigation, and I researched the career of a teacher and a coach. And while I did that and put this portfolio together, I actually got to job shadow Coach Diesel Horace in, at Northwestern. And I got to go to one of their practices, and I sat in with them when they watched film. And then another time, I went to their game, and at halftime, I got to go in there with them, which is very cool, except that they were losing, so too happy. And so then I won state in my event, and I got to compete at Nationals in San Diego. And that was just a really experienced the whole convention in San Diego. And I've gained a lot of confidence in my public speaking, and I've gained leadership skills, students. And so I'm very thankful for all of the experiences and opportunities that I've had through FCCLA, so.
Next is Kinley Patterson. Kinley is just a freshman this year, so as an eighth grader in her first year, she was state champion in her event, and then she finished with a national gold medal. And she is our first national star event champion.
So I competed in career investigation as well. I did a general physician. I did not get a chance to job shadow because of COVID. But I learned a lot about the career, and it was very interesting because it was a possible career choice for myself. And so I liked exploring different careers and got a lot of opportunities to talk to other doctors and stuff like that. I, like she said, I got first at state and got to go compete at San Diego. It was a very cool opportunity to go there, and I really like hearing what the judges have to say afterwards because it betters myself in my public speaking skills, so.
Okay, next is Tessa Littlefield. Tessa was also just an eighth grader last year. She competed in her star event, and she was state champion. And her event was a state-only event, there's different types, so there's state events and then the events that move on to Nationals. So Tessa went with us to San Diego, and she was an alternate voting delegate while we were out there. And she is looking forward to this year, so go ahead, Tessa.
So last year was my first year to compete in FCCLA. So for my star event, I chose children's literature level one. I chose this because I find little kids very fun to work with, so this came easy to me for the decision. Theme this year was Route sixty-six, and I had to write and illustrate a twelve-page children's book based on Route sixty-six. So basically, I researched it and all of the events that I found interesting, I wrote down and I learned more about them. And this girl's main character, and she takes you through sixty-six, and she just teaches you about each thing. And I feel like this event really helped me with my confidence in public speaking as well as trying new things. So yeah, I won state for this star event, and I had the opportunity to go to Nationals in San Diego, California, which was a great experience, and I miss it already so much, so thank you.
Okay, next is Gracia. Gracia competed in cake decorating, and she was a state qualifier. Last year, she also went with us to San Diego, and she served as a youth room consultant for star events.
Well, like she said, I competed in cake decorating, but I was not able to qualify for state because we had an issue with ID packs. So I had to do everything in one color, and that was not good. But throughout my experience, like just going to state, and I, I was very scared at first because I was told that they were going to ask questions, and I was like, okay, this is going to be good. But it ended up helping widen my speaking skills. And also, like, being able to go to Nationals was such a big deal for me because I know I didn't qualify for Nationals, well, you can't really in cake decorating. But it was really an eye-opening experience because one of the things that hit me the most while I was down in California was how much poverty there is. And that is an issue that's really close to my heart, and it really hurts me to see those people struggle. So I actually, it has caused me to want to go to bigger cities and do things like mission trips and stuff. So this year, actually this summer, I'm going to Seattle for a week, and I'll be going on a mission trip. And that will be like right after Nationals, so. And I'm just really excited to start my next event in FCCLA.
Okay, and we will finish with Hope Jordan. Hope is our chapter president, and she is also serving as our district president. There are only twenty district presidents in the entire state, so she is one of the twenty. Hope has competed in star events each year, she's a junior this year. So as an eighth grader, she was state runner-up, national runner-up. As a freshman, she was state runner-up and national runner-up. And then last year, she broke that barrier, state champion and national runner-up for the third time. So nothing to scoff at for sure, but this year is the year to break through that and become a national champion. And then virtual business challenge in 2021, she was national runner-up, and then last year, third place nationally.
FCCLA has given me so opportunities because I have been able to job shadow a nursing assistant. So I was able to scrub in on a surgery and watch that surgery while they were giving her the anesthetics. And then I was also able to job shadow an FCS teacher at Medford. And I was really eye-opening about what all of our teachers do and how much they care about their students. Another opportunity that FCCLA has given me was I was able to go to NLC Nashville two years ago. And I had never been there, and I, it was just a new place, and it was so fun to be in that atmosphere. And then I was also able to go to San Diego, and that was just a beautiful place to be. And it was so warm, but it was also just so inviting at the same time. But for my star event, I did FCS education, which meant that I investigated an FCS teacher. And that was a pathway that I thought I might want to go down. And as I investigated it, I found that I really might actually want to be a teacher. So that was really fun for me. FCCLA has helped me with being confident in my public speaking skills and my leadership skills. So FCCLA has given me the opportunities to help my future.
I just want to say thank you to you all because the great things that they've accomplished and those that came before would not be possible if we didn't have your support. So just know that we are grateful for that, and we're starting up on the next round of star events. So out of sixty membership forms I've had turn in, I've So out of 60 membership forms I've had turn in, I've only had 10 say no to Starvance, so that means 50. Might be a little unattainable, um, unless you can get a couple more of me. Um, but hopefully next year, we can bring triple this amount here, so.
We appreciate all, everything you guys have accomplished in representing Turkey, public schools. And congratulations to all of you. Anything else? That's it? Oh wait.
I don't have anything to follow up on.
Um, on August 15th, our after-school program started. Um, when we first started the year, we had 33 enrolled and we got to about 53, but it is softball season and football season, third, fourth, and the fifth and sixth. And so, um, on average, we probably have about 40 to 45 daily. Um, it kind of changes every day. And we also kicked off our education for learning fundraiser. Uh, that fundraiser is where you enter the mailers or the email addresses. Um, we've already raised $1,400 in just a week and a lot of those funds have been in gift cards for our teachers, which is amazing. Um, because our teachers could go in and select products and books for their classrooms through some of that. On September 6th, AEC came to talk to our second and third graders about electrical safety. That's always a fun time for the kids. They get to see some experiments and, um, some electrical safety tips. Also on September 6th, FCC LA came over and, um, read books to some of our little ones for Nationals Read a Book Day. I heard just a couple of them had a hard time remembering how to read, but they figured it out. Um, on September 7th, the Northwest Rangers, uh, girls' basketball team, this is really fun. They came in and read with some of our kiddos too. Maybe we can get them in the gym sometime too to help some of our kiddos with basketball. But, um, it's really cool to see the Northwestern Rangers in the classrooms. The, the kids really love that. On September 8th, State Representative Carl Newton came and read a book to kindergarten to promote ag in the classroom. And then on September 9th, we did our first Sonic Students of the Month. Uh, these students all received a $5 gift card to Sonic and a T-shirt provided by Sonic. So we're really excited about having the support of Sonic and the things that they're sponsoring for our students. So, um, other than that, we've just been doing a lot of beginning of the year testing and kind of making sure we know where everybody is at after the summer and then getting started, um, going, so.
All right. So number four, propose executive session to discuss the employment of support personnel so that the board may return to open session and vote to employ or find reason not to employ support personnel pending background checks pursuant, uh, 25 OS 307 B1. Make a motion to convene into executive session. Do I have a second? All second. Second, Judy?
Littlefield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yep.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
6:35. All right, acknowledgement of the board's return to open session. Do I have a, I'll make a motion to return to open session. Do I have a second?
All second.
Desiree, second. Judy?
Littlefield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yep.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
6:49. Go ahead with the minutes.
And executive session, we discuss the employment of support personnel for the 2022, 2023 school year.
Thank you. Uh, number five, discussion and vote to approve the employment of Sophie Cummins as elementary paraprofessional for the 22, 23 school year.
I would make the recommendation that we hire Sophie Cummins as an elementary paraprofessional for the school year.
Thank you. Any questions? Um, if not, I'll make a motion to hire Sophie to approve that hire. Heather, second. Judy?
Littlefield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yep.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Number six, discussion and vote to approve or not to approve a one-year waiver to serve fewer than 10 students in alternative education for the 22, 23 school year.
Uh, this is something that we submit, uh, almost yearly with our alternative education program. Uh, required we turn it into the state department if we serve fewer than 10, as it says. But we currently have four students enrolled in Chief Academy. That could change, uh, could have more, but could have less. Uh, but so far, the program is fine as well. Uh, the state requires if we have less than 10 students enrolled in that, that we, uh, turn in a, a waiver, a request. Um, so that's what this is and we've done that for the last couple of years.
Any questions over that?
I'll make a motion to approve one-year waiver.
Desiree has made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Shane, second. Judy?
Littlefield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Number seven, board to discuss a policy pertaining to SB 615 for the 22, 23 school year, vote to approve or not to approve said policy.
Uh, so we were emailed, um, a few weeks ago from the OSSBA with some emergency rules. Uh, and we are going to be, uh, accreditation officer will be looking, um, at this policy as part of 615. Uh, Senate Bill 615, I, I gave everybody a copy if you would like to read through that bill yourself. Uh, but Senate Bill 615, uh, goes through several things, but, um, basically this law, uh, means that, um, whatever your sex is on your birth certificate, that is the restroom that you have to use in a public facility. And so that applies to all schools. Uh, what the emergency rules are saying from the state, um, now as a public school, we have to have a policy that would provide disciplinary action to individuals who refuse to follow that rule. So, um, there are lists. I have these. Uh, so if they refuse to use the designated, uh, restrooms or changing areas designed for their sex, um, if they refuse to use, um, um, any of the, any of the designated areas uh, that are, uh, assigned to them, uh, as part of that Senate Bill 615, uh, then there's disciplinary action for students. There's disciplinary action that could be made for staff members that fall underneath those or, uh, patrons that are on your, uh, in your facilities. Um, our student handbook defines any act of disobedience as a class-to-offense. Um, and so in discussion with, uh, principals, uh, we feel that our policy, um, covers that in our handbook that if, um, you know, if they didn't follow those rules, uh, give a following, a class-to-offense, that is either, uh, could be a day of in-school suspension, it could be a day of out-school suspension. It kind of depends on severity of the interaction and just how disobedient, uh, they would be. Uh, as for staff members, uh, there's due process procedures that will have to be followed as part of this policy. Uh, and then there's also, uh, a process that people can file complaints. We have those policies in place if people want to file complaints against us in any way.
So this changes nothing. It's just, uh, they just kind of micromanage and us.
Basically.
And maybe the next policy they'll come out with is they'll start requiring clothes, you know, I mean, I don't know if it's just a C, I don't know, a C part of the law before where you have to provide a single occupancy restroom.
So. No, it, it wasn't necessarily before. Uh, our facilities are set up. We do have those areas that are single-use available if, if you arise. So, um, you know, we, we would be able to make those accommodations if, if we have an issue. Um, but like I said, this came out a couple of weeks ago and, uh, OSSBA directed us to make sure that we, we have this part of the policy in place that there is, we have a plan for disciplinary action if we have problems. Uh, like I said, our handbook already states, talks about disobedience and we do feel like that definitely falls underneath that category. Um, and that's how it would be handled, um, if that was, if that was to arise.
Any questions or thoughts or concerns on that? Curtis made a motion to approve. All second.
Littlefield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Number eight, board to retake action on the employment of, uh, Stephen L. Smith, corporation as financial consultants to the district, school district for the fiscal year of 22, 23.
We had to sign.
Okay.
Yes. I mean, that's basically, I don't know. Do I have it?
Yes.
Do I have it?
No, they tried to have, there's two copies right there.
Is that something that needs approval?
We approved it last board meeting.
Okay, that's, we just didn't have it.
We just didn't have this, okay. So there's no, no action other than signing or do we want to go through that right now and sign it? Or is that something we can do after the meeting?
Uh, I, I think that they're gonna want to see.
See it in the minutes?
Match, match up with the minutes that, that we did go ahead and prove and sign on Sunday.
So it was approved at the last meeting, correct?
Yes.
We might go ahead and prove it again, just like the prices of the dates match.
Okay. Um, and we've, obviously you've been using them for as long as I've been here, but, um, so I make a motion to go ahead and approve Stephen L. Smith Corporation as our financial consultants for the 22, 23 school year. Do I have a second?
All second.
Desiree, second. Judy?
Littlefield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Just one spot to sign.
Yes.
Number nine, superintendent's report.
Um, I don't have a lot. Uh, our principals have covered quite a bit. Um, you know, just to kind of reiterate some things on our financial status. We are going in the right direction. Uh, we do have carryover, uh, right now. You know, we, we shouldn't be in any situation, uh, like we were last year, looking at a negative balance before our January, um, revenue comes in, which is, uh, when our tax revenue, uh, the bulk of it comes in. Um, so we have the carryover there to, uh, to give through, uh, that way. Uh, there are several things that we're gonna have to keep an eye on. Like I said, utility costs, uh, and just, you know, inflation costs, shipping costs. It's getting harder and harder to find, uh, supplies. And so what we've started doing is, uh, you're like with our copy paper, uh, we usually spread out that purchase a little bit throughout the year, but we bought quite a bit to start this year, uh, to make sure that we got it. We got it at the price that it was at then before those costs went up. And so, um, you know, we're just trying to take a common sense approach to some of those things and those stuff that we can find out and, and get bulk that will last us through the year so that we don't see another, um, price hike later in the year. Uh, we're trying to do with those. I will say that most of our, you know, our vendors and everybody that we use, um, they're trying to help us out as much as we can. And so, um, that's good. And, uh, gross production, uh, gross production was up. It was the highest it's been, um, since I've taken over. It's, it's the highest it's been last month. It's a little over 143,000 for us. Uh, and I think that that will stay up, may not be that high this next month. Um, I think it'll be close to that and then it's gonna taper off just a little bit as the prices went down. But, you know, we're, we're seeing that revenue off those 100, 115, 120 dollar barrel prices, uh, that we had earlier this year. Uh, so that'll taper off a little bit, but, um, you know, it's still good, good news there. Uh, and it's helping us, you know, build that carryover amount up and give our general fund healthy. Uh, our state, the foundation aid that we do get, uh, from the state, that is up about 30,000 this year. That could change, uh, when, uh, midterm, uh, comes around after the first of the year. Uh, there's always a chance that that could change a little bit. Um, but as of right now, it's up, so even if it was to decrease a little bit, I still think we're in pretty good shape there. Uh, so that's good news also. Uh, working with our, uh, county assessor and treasurer to get some estimates in on our taxes. As of right now, it appears that we're not really gonna see any difference from what we collected last year and what we'll collect this year, even though there's protests going on. Uh, our valuation is up a little bit and so the protest amounts are kind of balancing out, so to speak, and giving us a little bit of consistency from one year to the next instead of such drastic up and downs, uh, or downs, not really ups, but, uh, like we've seen in the past. So there still is a little over $3 million being protested, uh, currently. That doesn't mean, that's not $3 million that we would get. That just means a total valuation. Uh, so there's still a couple hundred thousand dollars, uh, that should come to the school, uh, out of that $3 million. But we've formulated our budgets to know that we're not gonna get that much. If things get settled and whatever comes in, then that would be extra in that sense. So as of right now, they've kind of leveled off a little bit and, uh, while they're still not good and they are affecting us, they're not having a negative effect on us, uh, like they, they did in the past. So, uh, you know, I think that's good news. Uh, we're kind of learning how to live with that and how it's gonna affect us year to year. Uh, we met today, we sat down, uh, with, uh, our representative from Barlow, who, uh, helps handle our federal programs. Uh, Mrs. Patterson and I and Judy, uh, and, and we sat down today and went through, uh, our federal programs. And we'll start getting those budgets put together and applications submitted for this year. Some of those allocations are up a little bit. We still have some ESSR funds that we can spend. So we have a lot of federal dollars, uh, that are available. Uh, and, you know, I'm just gonna mention that there has been talk, uh, of possibly Oklahoma schools losing federal funding, uh, with possible, uh, future state, uh, leadership if elected. And I just want to say that, um, I don't think people fully understand how detrimental that would be to not just us, but all Oklahoma schools if that were to happen. We rely heavily on title funding, uh, and that comes from the federal government. If we were to lose out on that funding we're talking about, uh, for us, it's several hundred thousand dollars a year. Uh, and we, we can't, we can't put that bill on our own. And so I don't know of many schools that could. There may be a few that could last a little bit, but not very long. And so that's a big deal. That's something that, uh, I think, uh, we need to keep an eye on. Uh, you know, I'm gonna try to put some numbers together just so we would see exactly what that would look like for us, uh, just to be prepared, but I hope that that's something that doesn't happen. Uh, along those lines, uh, I will start getting our, uh, since we get our estimates meet, uh, I'll start putting some budgets together, uh, like we went over last year and some projections and what that looks like. And we'll kind of start, uh, you know, taking a look at some different projects and things like that that we need to start addressing some bigger picture things, uh, short-term and long-term as well. Uh, one thing that, uh, I kind of want to, you know, put out there right now is we did have our first student council meeting. I started having those meetings. Uh, Mr. Jordan had student council meetings, but I started sitting in on those last year, uh, which I thought were very, uh, a good way to communicate with our kids and hear what's going on, especially over here, uh, as they advocate for different things. Uh, but one project that they're gonna start working on, uh, is just kind of some school beautification things. Uh, we have posters in our hallway and, and those are different at different times, but we have just a lot of just blank space and so that's something that they're looking at. They're looking at, uh, finding somebody that may come up here and volunteer if we can figure out a way to pay for the paint. And just, you know, maybe it's a Cherokee chief mural. One idea was to paint. It's a great day to be a chief kind of down this hallway. Uh, and the restrooms, uh, but, you know, just things that put out positive school culture, uh, atmosphere. And so student council is kind of heading that up. They're starting to get ideas. They're starting to get ideas together. Of course, all of those things will be approved before we just let anybody take a paintbrush, you know, in there. But I think that can be a really neat thing for them to take on and, you know, give those kids an opportunity to see what, you know, student council, what they can do and get input from their classmates. So kind of excited about that. I think that'll be a really neat thing as it goes along. So as it does, we'll keep everybody updated as far as that goes. But it's been, it's been a whirlwind getting schools started, very busy. I think the hot weather is making it a little warmer. I don't know if, I hate to say miserable, it's not making it miserable, but it's just, yeah, so, you know, kudos to the kids for being out there, playing softball and football and.
Cross country.
Cross country and just doing all those things and working. It doesn't, it doesn't seem to bother them, but I think it bothers the adult. I know it bothers me a lot more than you do, so. Other than that, staff has been just awesome getting everything going and starting this year with our new hires. And I think everything's going really well. So, good thanks.
Thanks, Chris. Under ten, any new business?
No, no new business.
All right. Number eleven, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Desiree, second. Judy?
Littlefield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
I have stuff for everybody to find.
Seven oh seven.
Okay, thank you.